Do you not open the door, please? Good evening, everybody. This is Steve Linell, Vice Chair of the City of Nashville Zoning Board of Adjustment, and this is the March 26, 2024 zoning board meeting. I'm filling in for Rob Shaw, Chair, who cannot be with us tonight. The Chair is in control of the meeting. To the extent practicable and advisable, the Board will follow the procedures as identified in its bylaws. The applicant will present their case for 15 minutes, followed by questions by the Board. Next, persons wishing to speak in favor or with questions or opposition will be asked to speak for up to five minutes each. If there are questions or opposition, the applicant will have five minutes to present a response. Finally, one and only one person with questions or in opposition will be permitted to speak again before the Board deliberates and determines an outcome. A timer will be visible on the room monitors, I hope, or we'll keep track of it, and we'll notify speakers as the time is expiring. Tonight, we will be hearing requests for deviation from the Nashville zoning code in the form of applications for special exceptions and/or variances. I think these are, yes, special, we have both today. A special exception is a request that seeks permission to do something that the zoning ordinance permits only under special circumstances. To grant a special exception, five points of law are required to be met. These are outlined in the application and will be summarized in Board motions. A variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that ordinance does not permit. Variances also have five points of law to be met, different from those for special exceptions. Per the City of Nashville bylaws and State of New Hampshire revised statutes, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any motion. The Board will hear all scheduled cases if a quorum of three voting Board members is present at this meeting, which there are. Any citizen has the right to contest the decision that this Board makes. Should we make a decision that you believe is in error, you have the right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received by the City of Nashville Planning Department within 30 calendar days from the date of decision. Should this Board not grant a rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court. Please contact Mr. Falk of the Planning Department for more information. So for tonight, we have the following full Board members in attendance. I have myself, Steve Linell, I'm the Vice Chair. We have Mr. JP Boucher, who serves as our clerk. We have Mr. Josh Neely, and Mr. J. Mancara. And we have alternate members, we have Ms. F. Stathia-Boros, and our newest alternate member, Mr. Andrew Sylvia. In addition to Board members, we also have with us to my left, Mr. Carter Falk, who's the Deputy Planning Manager, who will now take roll call attendance. Mr. Boucher.
Present.
Mr. Neely.
Present.
Mr. Mancara.
Present.
Ms. Boros.
Present.
Mr. Sylvia.
Present.
And I, Steve Linell, I'm present. Alternates may fully participate in discussions but will vote only if a full Board member recuses themselves or if there are fewer than five full Board members in attendance tonight. We have all, we have one, two, three, four, we have four Board members, so I will be alternating between Ms. Boros and Mr. Sylvia as the cases go, and Ms. Boros will be first. Mr. Falk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay, thank you. I will now read the first case into the record. JFC Real Estate LLC, owner 581 and 593 Amherst Street, Sheet H, lots 107 and 627, requesting special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-24-F to work in the 150 conservation zone according, associated with the Penachuk Brook to allow for a new one-story, 24,773-square-foot service center and associated site improvements for the Best Ford Service Center redevelopment project. This is in the GB/MU Zone, Ward 2. Is there somebody here to present the case? Thank you. Please give your name and address to the record and walk us through your application.
Well, good evening, Mr. Chair, Members of the Board. For the record, my name is Tom Zajak. I'm a civil engineer with Hayner Swanson, 3 Congress Street, here in Nashua, here tonight representing the applicant. Also with me here tonight is Mr. John Crowley from JFC Real Estate, as well as Attorney Brad Westgate from Weiner and Bennett, who represents JFC. As stated, we're here tonight seeking a special exception for proposed impacts to the conservation zone associated with a project, Best Ford Service Center project located at 579 and 591 Amherst Street. Mr. Chair, I just have a brief presentation tonight in terms of the facts of the case. We'll touch on the special exception criteria as noted, and then we'll just be turning it over to Attorney Westgate briefly to speak as well. So as you can see, I'm sure in your packets, you have the various plans. I'm going to start with kind of the master site plan overview plan. It's up on the, on the screen here. The subject site really includes two parcels totaling about 18 acres. Abutting the site is Penachuk Brook, the Merrimack Town Line and town owned by Penachuk Corporation to our north, Town Fair Tire and other commercial users to our west, Nimcor Drive and Assisted Living Facility and other commercial properties to our east, Amherst Street, and a number of mixed-use commercial properties to the south. So as I mentioned, there's two lots. The larger lot, which is located where my cursor is here on the screen, to the right-hand side of the plan, that's Lot 627. It's 590, 579 Amherst Street. It's the existing Best Ford dealership site. It's about 16 acres. You can see on the plan, it has kind of a unique geometry to it. It's got plenty of frontage on Amherst Street and Nimcor Drive, kind of pinches down where the building is and then opens back up to the rear of the site. So what exists out there today, there's about a 35,000-square-foot building that houses the Best Ford dealership, sales, and vehicle service and repair, along with some large outdoor vehicle storage and display areas on all sides of the building, specifically up along Amherst Street. The rear of the site is comprised of Penachuk Brook, so our rear property line is the center of the Brook. It's associated wetlands along with a wooded buffer in the back of the site. So there's kind of those, those two pieces that make up that 16-acre site. Lot 107 is the, is the smaller lot on the left-hand side of the plan where my cursor is. That's Lot 107. 591 Amherst Street is currently an UNO's restaurant. That lot is about two acres in size. Right now, it comprises about a 5,900-square-foot UNO's restaurant, along with associated parking and loading areas. Topography of both sites are relatively mild to moderate. Generally, everything works its way back towards the wetlands in the Brook in the back of, of both sites. Both sites have formal onsite drainage and stormwater management systems and are serviced by public sewer and public water, also enjoy well-drained sandy soils. So as you can imagine, with the Brook in the back of the site, there's a number of local and state buffers or setbacks related to, to this property. First, there's a 250-foot New Hampshire DES Shoreland Protection Buffer off of the Brook in the rear of the site. From the associated wetlands to the Brook, there's a 75-foot prime wetland buffer here in Nashua. And then in addition, this site, along with really large portions of the Amherst Street corridor, are located within the City of Nashville Water Supply Protection District, and that's why we're here tonight. So as part of that overall water supply protection district boundary, within there, there are areas called conservation zones. So 300 feet from Penachuk Brook, Penachuk Pond, Holt Pond, some of the major water bodies within the Penachuk or City of Nashville Water Supply Protection District. And then from any wetland associated with those bodies or any wetland within the Watershed Protection District, there's what's called a 150-foot conservation zone. So I know this Board does not see a ton of these. I've had a couple of these in the past, but it's not something that comes up a ton in terms of that 150-foot conservation zone. Both the UNO's site and the Best Ford sites, you know, were approved and constructed relatively around the same time, in the early to mid, to mid 2000s. And they took the same approach, which we'll talk about in a second, in terms of the, the proposed project and the proposed impacts, which is there was certainly development within that 150-foot conservation zone, but no impacts or disturbance to that 75-foot prime wetland buffer. So that's key, and I'll talk about that in a second, but we're holding that same approach. And then my client, JFC, purchased both lots in 2022 and 2023, the Best Ford site proper, I'll call it the larger lot, along with the UNO's site last year. So the proposed project is to demolish the existing UNO's restaurant building, along with the site improvements on the smaller lot, Lot 107. They'll also be demolishing the existing employee lot, which is located just behind the UNO's lot, as I mentioned. That larger lot has unique geometry, so it actually, behind, who knows, is, is part of the, the Best Ford dealership lot. There's an existing parking lot there where the employees park. What we're proposing is a proposed one-story, roughly 25,000-square-foot vehicle service center building, along with associated parking, site and utility improvements. You can see from the plan, we've got generally similar access on Amherst Street. There's two curb cuts that go into the UNO's site now. One, we're leaving as is, one, we're modifying slightly to line up better with, with the program, as well as give better connectivity to the Best Ford site. The existing shared driveway along the rear, I'm sorry, there is an existing shared driveway along the rear of the Town Fair Tire, Car Wash, and Starbucks lot to our west, which really allows connectivity from these sites back to the signalized intersection at Selena and Amherst Street. So there's easements that are in place there, and we'll be leaving that intact in, in terms of our, our site plan proposal. The project will include new curbing sidewalks, landscaping, site lighting, public sewer, public water, and underground utility improvements to support the redevelopment. The existing lots, it's proposed to, to keep the lots separate as they exist today. You'll notice that the, the building and site was designed as such or laid out as such to maintain all those setbacks in terms of that internal lot line, and that's really being done for financing purposes, but essentially, once built, these will function as one site. Adding this vehicle service and repair capability to augment what Best Ford offers now will enhance their service to their customers, and as I mentioned, that, that use is already within the 579 Amherst Street building. The new building will have limited customer interface. Customers will still enter and drive into the existing Best Ford dealership building for their vehicle service and repair needs, and employee will then take that car and drive it over to the new, the new facility next door. So there won't be a ton of customer-facing capabilities of, of the new building itself. And of course, all vehicle repair and service will occur inside the existing buildings. When we looked at the design and layout of this project, certainly we made careful consideration of the site constraints in minimizing our impacts to a number of those buffers in the rear of the site. So we tried to minimize our land disturbance, utilize existing topography, soils and drainage patterns, avoid any direct wetland impacts or wetland buffer impacts to the 75-foot prime wetland buffer. And then what we're proposing is really to redevelop or develop portions of that 150-foot conservation zone with a special attention to the design of stormwater management and erosion control practices. So in total, our, our plans will propose to impact approximately 26,100 square feet of the conservation zone located on Lot 627. Just to give you a, a rough order of magnitude of that total impact area I just mentioned, about 57% of that land is, is currently developed for the existing dealership, and about 25% is paved. And it's important to note, again, as I mentioned, there's no direct wetland impacts or any impacts to the 75-foot prime wetland buffer. The project will employ multiple stormwater management practices that will result in both qualitative treatment and a decrease in peak flows leaving the site. The final design of stormwater and erosion control will be subject not only to the rigorous review of the planning board, but also New Hampshire DES alteration in terrain, as well as New Hampshire DES shoreline protection, both of those application processes. And then since the site is located within the Watershed Protection District, a copy of the site plans and stormwater study were provided to Penachuk Water Works for review of approval. Penachuk reviews all development projects that go before the planning board that are located within the Watershed Protection District, again, with a special eye towards stormwater and erosion control. And Penachuk staff has completed their review and provided an approval letter to us dated February 24, 2014, which is on file with staff. I thought that was important to note in terms of what we're proposing. Mr. Chair, included in our application was addressing the five criteria for special exceptions. I think what I'd like to do is just incorporate those into the record, and I'd be more than happy to address any of those five. There were no special regulations for this intended use, so I'd be happy to answer any questions from the Board on those. But certainly, our testimony would be that we meet those five, five points. So at this time, I'd just like to turn things over to Attorney Westgate, after which we'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Members of the Board. My name is Brad Westgate. I'm a lawyer with Weiner and Bennett, 402 Amherst Street here in Nashua. Just wanted to briefly address matter before the Board. The Board, I believe, is aware that last month, that received a letter from Attorney Francis Bruton, who is here tonight, and I'm sure will address the Board as well, relative to a matter involving UNOs and their lease. Attorney Bruton represents UNOs. This, this project, of course, involves the UNO's property. JCF Real Estate is the owner of the UNO's property. UNO's is a tenant under an existing lease. In short, Attorney Bruton maintained that he brought into question whether or not this Board should proceed this evening for a couple thoughts and reasons. One was, he questioned whether or not UNO's should receive notice as in a butter, and secondly, therefore wondered whether the Board should proceed, having not received notices in a butter. We maintain that, and I believe it's consistent with staff's determination, that UNO's does not fall within the definition of a butter. Under the Nashville Land Use Code, the butter term is defined in consistent with that set forth in the statute, RSA 672. Essentially defines a butter to be abutting property owner adjacent across the street or across the stream. Does not bring in the term tenant or less C. If you think about it sort of in practical terms and historically, if any time a applicant came before this Board who had tenants in his property, if the tenant brought some sort of, maintained in some fashion or other that the lease would preclude the applicant from seeking a special exception, a variance, whatever the case may be, then tenants could easily frustrate a landowner's ability to come before this Board and seek applications and seek approval of those applications. That just simply can't be the case, and I think the definition of a butter makes that There is, of course, a method in which the tenant can express concerns about what an applicant may do relative to the property of which he's a tenant, but this isn't the forum for it. This Board deals with special exceptions, variances, and the like, and seeks to approve them on the terms that are set forth in your land use code. This Board's not set up to, or is the appropriate forum to analyze and handle what might be private property owner rights and private property owner disputes. Obviously, the court system can handle all of that. UNO's is not without remedy if it feels that it has lease rights that still would be in place and would have the ability to enforce, but it simply wouldn't be here. Obviously, we would need all the approvals necessary, not only from this Board, from what also Mr. Zajak indicated with planning board and the state approvals as well, but even that doesn't get us to a conclusion. A matter involving UNO's lease could be enforced by UNO's and would, again, not be determined in this forum.
Attorney Westgate, one more minute.
Thank you. Then lastly, Mr. Chair, and just one other thought. The, I've negotiated and written and reviewed many leases over the years. Sometimes, in a lease, a tenant will insist on having a provision to the effect that landlord will not seek land use approvals without the tenant's permission, but that's an express term in the lease, and it simply isn't the case in, in this matter before you. Happy to answer any questions on that, and Mr. Zajak, of course, on the application itself.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any questions from the Board? Mr. Neely.
Actually, for Mr. Zajak. I don't think I'm clear. When you, when you go behind the property now, there's obviously quite a bit of parking. We talked about the employee parking lot. That's, that's kind of, I don't know, almost on like a finger back there, and there's like this, almost like a small wetland or culvert or something coming down the middle. And you had just said this is about a 26,000-square-foot area, 58% is currently affected now. That's all by parking lot, right?
Correct.
So this, this other 42%, are we looking to add more parking lot in?
So what I just brought up on the screen is the existing conditions plan showing that same area, and I will cycle through an existing conditions plan, a demo plan, and then a proposed plan, you'll see. So as I mentioned, about, what did I say, 57% of that area is currently disturbed, so right now, it exists as either 25% of parking, and the remaining area would be lawn area, and then above that, 43% is currently wooded. We're proposing the shaded areas, that would be pavement and curbing and parking area to be removed as part of the project. You can see where my cursor falls here, that's where that conservation line falls, 150-foot buffer, so you can see we're well within that. And then when you fast forward to the development plan, you can see in green, which would be that 26,000-square-foot impact area. So that footprint is, the majority of the area that we are proposing to impact within that conservation zone is redevelopment, but there is an expansion of the existing footprint as it comes to tree clearing and the footprint of the parking and stormwater management area. And there is a slight, to answer your question, there is a very slight increase in impervious area if you just look at that buffer area.
Mr. Mancara.
Also for Mr. Zajak, did I, here you correctly saying that there were no special conditions that apply in this case?
Correct, that's my understanding.
Well, there, there are.
In the packet here, these A through E letters here, that's exactly what is in the ordinance. It's just really a copy of the ordinance, really, that's all. It's not really special conditions, per se. We just copied these five. That's, I don't know if these are special conditions, they're, they're just items in the ordinance that you need to look at for work in the Conservation Protection District.
So to the applicant, are you aware of those conditions?
I am. I guess the special conditions I was referencing would be the, you know, typically if you have a wetland buffer or wetland impact, there's, there's special conditions that you go through. I think there's nine additional criteria points.
Is there the Conservation Commission?
Mr. Chair just asked a question on the Conservation Commission. Our staff determined that this did not require Conservation Commission review and approval as there is not supposed to be any work done in the prime wetland area, so we did not require them to go to the Concom.
Any more questions from the Board?
If you look at the map, Mr. Zajak can bring it up on the screen as well, but there's, there's an area on the plan, this is the 75-foot buffer, they're not doing anything in there. It's just a 150. Hopefully, that's true. Here's the 75-foot buffer, they're not doing anything in that, in that area. Borrow it.
Mr. Falk is passing around a map. I'm, for, for the record, just to let people know what's going on, the, a large map of the plan indicating the, the 75-foot wetlands buffer and then the additional 75-foot disturb city buffer for-
Protection zone.
Protection zone for, for the, for Penachuk Water Works. And that the, the planned work is not in the, in the 75-foot wetlands protection, but in this watershed conservation zone that has been reviewed by Penachuk. We have, we have testimony on that.
And they are here for the special exception to work in the Watershed Protection Zone.
Yeah. Mr. Mancara.
So a follow-up. So in looking at the packet that was provided to us with the five criteria, you're saying that small C does not apply?
Well, we don't think so, because that section 12-3, we looked at that, and that has absolutely nothing to do, that has to do with monetary payments. It really doesn't have anything to do with the Conservation Commission. We don't even, quite frankly, know why that language is in there, and never had a case where we really had, had, had to use that section, that 12.3, 12-3.
So do any of the five criteria that were included in the packet, A through E, apply in this case?
I believe everything but, probably but C, because that's all part of the ordinance. And that's what they're applying for a special exception for. It's, because five is, in other cases where currently developed sites are proposed for expansion or redevelopment, a special exception may be granted if the following conditions are met, and that's what these five are. Our staff is really not sure about number three, our letter C, because there really is no prohibited acts going on in that section 12-3, which is a financial, monetary issue. But A is, I would believe, A, B, D, and E are all issues that the applicant's already brought up that they, believe that they meet.
Mr. Neely.
Mr. Zajak, did, did you not just say that there was going to be an increase of impervious surface?
Sure. I think if I could speak to, I think what is being, what is implied here is about that section, about no increase to impervious surface except allowed under F5C, which essentially points the project to the Conservation Commission in a positive recommendation. I think in discussions with staff, that process was perhaps supplemented with, or, or replaced with staff review in terms of, of the intent of the ordinance, which is water supply protection and stormwater and erosion control, which is why I brought up the, the Penachuk review and process. And so I know in, in speaking with, you know, not only Mr. Falk, but Mr. Durfee and, and staff about how this section is applied, as Mr. Falk mentioned, that section 12-3 of the city code really is outdated. It points to, to nothing, and they felt that it wasn't, it was an outdated ordinance, and they were applying it in that manner in terms of that review being at a, at a staff level.
And if any of the proposed development, like part of the parking area or grading or anything else, was in that 75-foot prime wetland buffer, they would, of course, have gone to the Conservation Commission for review and approval. Also, the Conservation Commission is a recommending body. They're not, they don't have the authority that the zoning board and/or planning board has as well, so.
Anything else? Mr. Sylvia.
Was, was there any consideration in regard to not having the parking spaces within the green area?
Within the area of the conservation zone?
Yeah, the second one, not the, not the conservation one, but the one, the city one.
Sure. In terms of 150-foot buffer?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we, you know, certainly tried to be as compact as we can, you know, with a, providing the needed, you know, parking and, you know, driveway turn-through areas that would accomplish the program that, that Best Ford is seeking. I mean, certainly, we're trying to keep those as close as we can. And out of that, out of that area, again, when I, when I think about that buffer, it's really about-
And out of that, out of that area, again, when I, when I think about that buffer, it's really about, it's within the watershed protection. It's about stormwater, it's about erosion control, and, you know, that's where our focus was. So my testimony is we try to be as compact as we can and try to work within that footprint as best we can, knowing that, you know, the majority of that area, 57%, is currently developed and does have quite a bit of impervious area there.
And obviously, since it's a service center, there's going to be a lot of car-related fluids, like oil changes and brake fluids and whatnot. And that's all, that has nothing to do with the stormwater management system, correct? It wouldn't be anywhere near that, it wouldn't go toward that, it would be taken out separately.
Correct, so all that would be, you know, inside the building and the rules that govern, you know, everything that goes on within the building. The stormwater management system will include, you know, oil-water separator provisions in a nod to that because we are located, you know, adjacent to the wetlands and the conservation zone.
Any other board members with questions? Not seeing any, okay. Is there a member of the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Not seeing any. Are, is there a member of the audience with questions, concerns, or comments on the application? Okay, I see a woman in the back with her hand raised, or, one of you? Feel free to adjust the microphone or you can even pull it out if you need to. Please give your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Denise Mucioli. I live at 6 Midhurst Road in Nashua. And I appreciate Mr. Zajak and his team going through Penachuk and trying to do all the right steps. Matt Sullivan did tell me that this is not technically conservation land. However, I do have concern because it is part of a wildlife corridor, that's number one. This Penachuk brook feeds into the Meramec. I don't think I have to explain to you guys how important the Meramec River is. So a couple of things with the site that I would be concerned with, oil, antifreeze, gasoline, or any type of that that could possibly leach into that area, I would hope that there's going to be measures in place. I would like to know if there's going to be any vegetation planted, any trees removed, any trees planted to help mitigate any possibility of any of those chemicals leaching into that brook because it's going to go right down, it's going to flow right down into the Meramec. And that's something we definitely don't want. I'm not sure I agree with the attorney's review of what an abut is. I most definitely think UNOS is an abut. I'd be curious to see if a site variance sign was posted there because if it was posted there, you would think UNOS would be aware of that. So that's one question I have in general. That's the only opposition that I have. I'm just concerned about keeping that brook clean and pristine and ensuring that there's no, you know, even lawn chemicals, you mentioned the lawn chemicals leaching in. Rock salt, in the wintertime, people don't realize that rock salt's very dangerous to brooks and animals and, you know, things like that. So that's it, but I want to praise them that it seems like they did a pretty good job with vetting some of that. But I did still have some questions.
Okay, one moment. Are there any questions from the board? At the end of other comments, we'll have the applicant come up and respond to your questions.
Sure, all right, thank you.
Thank you, okay. Sir, go up, I'll give you a name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, sir, and members of the board. Don't usually get to raise a mic. My name is FX Bruton or Francis Bruton. I'm an attorney with Bruton and Barabee in Dover. And I'm here and I represent UNOS. And I can tell you, it was a shock and a surprise to find out that the landlord would be here. UNOS has been in that location for 20 years. And I think there was reference, at least in our correspondence, that there is a disagreement with respect to the lease, where we believe we have another 15 years or so to reside at the premises. So obviously, we were surprised to understand that the building would be demolished despite the fact that we thought we would continue to operate there. So we did approach the landlord and they did agree to continue the matter. We are thankful for that, respect that. We have a difference of an agreement and we're trying to work that out. And they're still trying to do that. And in that vein, we would ask that the matter be continued so that we can possibly do that. And if we don't do that, it's likely that the parties would then have to get, as Attorney Westgate mentioned, the court to come in and make a decision. Just to kind of step back in context, this, for me, I mean, I've been in front of boards for 30 years and I've never seen an example where I was representing a tenant who thinks they have a right to be there, see their, the plan, their building to be demolished. So I think it's a different scenario than the typical abut or someone who doesn't claim that they have an interest in a long-term lease to come to you and say they have an issue. And I think they're an aggrieved party, I think they can do that, I think they have standing to challenge a decision. But I think this is very unique in that there is a possibility that this application really is premature. And what I mean by that is, I'm not sure you or the board or the applicant can say definitively that this is the plan that would occur or that you know where buildings might be. If we didn't resolve our issues, and I hope we do, there might be a court that says this building has to stay there and there may be other plans in terms of how the rest of the site is developed. So I just think that it's premature and I would ask that, that you delay this stay at and/or table or continue it at least for another month so that the parties can potentially resolve their differences. And I think, again, if they can't, any decision you render might be in jeopardy with respect to how the parties address that. I think that request kind of dovetails with potentially notice issue that doesn't relate to us, but if you're that close to the brook, you're supposed to provide DES notice. And I reviewed the abutters list and I don't see that that occurred. So maybe that might necessarily have to happen as well. Under 676:4, you're required to do that if you're within 500 feet of a brook or a stream or a pond. So we would ask respectfully that you do that. We are hopeful that we can resolve our differences quickly. But right now, UNOS intention is to stay for another 15 years. So this is unique for sure, but we would like you to consider those issues.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? All right.
Thank you, sir.
Can we be seated? Mr. Zajak or Attorney Westgate? Oh, I only saw two people with hands up for questions, concerns, or comments. Is there anybody else? Yeah, I didn't think so, okay. So Attorney Westgate, Mr. Zajak, you have five minutes to respond to the issues that were brought up tonight.
Mr. Chair, would it be okay if we both spoke during the period?
Oh, sure.
I think there were a couple of questions directed to both of us, that's okay.
That's fine.
Okay. So there were a couple of questions related, I think, to kind of stormwater vegetation. There was a question about the signs posted, certainly the, both the zoning board signs were put up. I put them up myself, out along the frontage, so I can assure you that was done following, you know, city procedure. Vegetation, we submitted site plans to the planning board related to, you know, detailed landscape plans. There would be vegetation, revegetation along the back of the property as well as a healthy vegetation plan throughout the site. Oil, antifreeze, you know, again, we're talking about stormwater. You know, anytime you have a redeveloped site, you have to meet stormwater regulations, not only city and Nashua, but DES, like I mentioned, and it's stringent and it only gets more stringent. So even though the previous two sites were built only 20 years ago, what we're proposing is going to meet the, you know, the full teeth of the current regulations and all the best practices that are employed, not only for any site, but sites specifically like this located within watershed protection areas, within shoreline areas. So certainly, my testimony is that, you know, as a whole, the stormwater management system for this project, for this site, will be a significant improvement based on what's out there now.
Attorney Westgate.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A few thoughts relative to Attorney Bruton's comments. First and foremost, the, whether or not to proceed was the choice we made. The risk is ours as to dispute with UNOS regarding the lease is resolved or not. But it's not a risk to be analyzed by this board or adjudicated by this board. Again, there are clear avenues that UNOS has to pursue it. Attorney Bruton indicated, we're talking, yes, we are. But it's impossible to know where that all leads. And to have our ability to come before this board and then the planning board, which was scheduled for the end of next week, subject to that type of uncertainty simply isn't fair to a property owner and an applicant. There is a clear forum for this to be resolved, whether it be by agreement or if not, by way of the court system. Any challenge that UNOS wishes to make to what proceeds tonight or before the planning board, they're open to do so. But we're thwarted if the process is merely continued, not because of an analysis of the merits of the application, but because of the maintenance that, well, there's something that should be sorted out. You really can't sort it out, zoning board, maybe the court can, therefore, we should wait. That shouldn't be how the process works. And I think that the idea, the very idea that it's something that has to be worked out indicates that it's not before this board to have to deal with it. It shouldn't be a burden that's imposed on this board. It should be dealt with by the private parties through the normal process that private parties resolve disputes. Thank you. Again, happy to answer questions.
I don't, yeah, there's no questions. Okay, so now either Ms. Mucioli or Attorney Bruton may come up and have a final five minutes to talk if they wish. But I'm not seeing anybody. All set, okay, so I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. So I'll ask for comments from the board, and again, Ms. Boras will be voting on this case. Mr. Boucher, your comments.
I'm simply looking, this is a special exception request. I understand that both parties have some issues to work out. I do believe that this board can make a decision on this case. And that's, that's what my opinion is at this point. So with that, a couple of things. We, I've been on the board long enough to have seen some of these requests. And so I'm confident with the review that's been done so far, the Penachuk water review, which is especially the one I would look at to begin with because they have no, they have no gain one way or the other. So with, you know, it's testified in approval from Penachuk Water Works for this project. We also hear that, that there's also, work is being done that will comply with NHDS specifications to this project. So with that, I think the project is reasonable, what they're proposing. I think that, again, we're just, I'm just looking at the special exception. I'm not determining the actual site plan, I think that is the job of the planning board. I think that, that they do meet the requirements for the project.
Thank you. Mr. Neely.
I also agree, we do not need to have a continuance of this case. I'd like to look at this on the merits, just of what was presented, nothing to do with the lease. I am not in favor of this project. I have concerns that Section D specifically of the Water Supply Protection District's special exception conditions is not being met. I do believe we heard some testimony that they are adding impervious surface to this area. We have taken a look at the plan, it's about 26,000 square feet. There was testimony that 58% of that is affected now. And they're looking to, you know, do some more work in the additional 42%. I do believe that 150-foot protection zone is there for a reason. I think a little more creativity could keep, keep these folks out of that area. I just think it's so critical in the watershed in that area that we need to keep as much out of that as possible. So for those reasons, I'm not in favor of this application.
Thank you. Mr. McCarra.
I also agree that I don't believe the lease issue is relevant to us to have to decide. But on the merits, I also can't find support for this application for the reasons that Mr. Neely stated. But also, when I look at subsection C, it is clear that section 12.3 that it points to in the city code is an incorrect reference. Whether that was a Scrivener's error in the drafting of the ordinance or there was a section of the ordinance that changed at some point and this was not picked up. I think, to me, it's pretty clear that it is the intent of the Water Supply Protection District that in the event that you see under subsection D, that an increase in impervious surface is proposed, there must be a determination by the Conservation Commission that what are these prohibited acts, which I haven't had a chance to see, that in fact, the use would not create those prohibitive acts. So again, because there is an increase in impervious surface area and there is no determination from the Conservation Commission, I can't find support for this application.
Thank you. Ms. Boras.
I'm also not in support of the application, as my last two colleagues have stated the same reasons.
Mr. Sylvia.
Okay. I'm, I am concerned about the application in regard to the impervious surface that was said. I don't believe the lease is pertinent in regard to what's on the agenda here, although there are other avenues that have been set in regard to that. I do think the letter from Penachuk, though, is a positive. So I think Conservation Commission review might be an avenue if that's possible. But at this point, I'm concerned about the impervious area.
Thank you. I also agree with my colleagues that the lease is not something that we should be concerned about here. The increase in impervious surface is a problem, I believe. And so I'm somewhat skeptical. What I'm hearing is a majority of the board is inclined to deny this. Mr. Falk, you know, what, if we deny this special exception and then they come back with a different plan that, you know, for example, that doesn't increase the impervious surface thing or that the Conservation Commission has, has approved, would they be allowed to apply again?
It could. I mean, I would think it would meet the Fisher versus Dover determination. So I would, I would think that they could come back.
Attorney Westgate, I'm sorry, there's no more public input allowed at this time.
Only with your indulgence, but I'll stay silent.
Well, the board could, could vote to reopen the public hearing and take some additional testimony. Is the board inclined to do that?
I would be inclined to if it's limited to the point that we were discussing.
Okay, so I will make a motion to reopen the public hearing for the purpose of hearing some, five minutes of additional testimony on the issue of, that we've been discussing. Second, Mr. Neely, thank you. All those in favor, raise your hand, okay. Okay. That's unanimous? Okay, so, sir, you have five minutes and talk to us.
Far less than that. Mr. Chair, and I appreciate the board's indulgence. I only ask that the board perhaps give consideration to continuing the case with a condition or with our agreement to appear before the Conservation Commission to vet out the items that you've been discussing in the last few minutes.
So we have a request from the applicant to table this to some future date that we would have to figure out in order for them to go through the Conservation Commission and get a recommendation. Does that, so I will make a motion to table this case to, we have to do a date certain? Is that certain?
Well, I believe the Conservation Commission meets the very first week of the month. They meet once a month, so it would have to go, what's it, the first meeting in May? You guys okay with that?
Yeah, okay, so.
Whatever, I don't have a calendar, the very first meeting that we have in May.
Okay, you figure that out?
Which is May 7th?
7th, okay.
Thank you.
So, motion to table case one to the ZBA meeting of May 7th. Mr. Mancara, thank you for your second. All those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous? Okay, this case is tabled until May 7th. Next case. Kuma Nashua LLC owner, 102-104 East Hollis Street, Sheet 38, Lot 52, requesting use variance from land use code section 190-15, Table 15-1, number 15, to convert an existing first-floor commercial space to an apartment resulting in a total of six residential units in the building. This is in the GI TOD zone, Ward 7. I see somebody here who's present the case. Please give your name and address for the record and tell us what you'd like to do.
Thank you. Good evening, my name's Tom Bester and with Central Realty on West Hollis Street in Nashua. We're seeking a use variance to convert the current commercial space into a residential space. We're not looking to increase the number of units in the building, just the use of the first floor commercial space to a single unit. It's currently a single unit. That's pretty much it.
Well, it would be an increase of residential units.
Increase in residential units, correct, but not number of units.
Mr. Neely.
Question?
Yes, so it's currently a commercial space.
Correct.
Have you made any attempt to fill it with another commercial venture or are you just, are you doing this because we just need housing stock or what's the reason?
The opinion is it doesn't really serve as a commercial unit. There's no parking at the building, so I'm not sure what sort of commercial space would benefit from not being able to park at the building. And if you've seen the building at 102 East Hollis Street, the residential unit would be an upgrade for sure. Do you know the one I'm talking about?
Yeah.
Okay.
So you say there is no parking?
Correct.
And for the residents?
There are three residential spots behind the building.
Three spots. Mr. Sylvia. And Mr. Sylvia will be voting on this case, by the way.
Thank you. So in section, question five of section three in your application, you mentioned that the current residents have agreements with nearby properties to park since there's limited parking on the current property you're talking about. Can you talk about, more about that?
So correct. Next door is the budget rental, car rental place. One of our tenants has an agreement with budget to park on their property.
Okay, and they got that on their own? You didn't give that to them?
Correct.
Okay, and these new tenants on the first floor would have to find their own arrangement?
Yes, there are, I think, two out of the five residents that currently have vehicles, the rest do not.
Okay.
We work with a lot of programs through Nashua City Welfare and Harbor Homes for tenants that don't need parking necessarily.
Okay. And if they need parking, but they couldn't get it, what would happen then?
Honestly, we wouldn't rent it with parking, so if you have a vehicle, what?
Okay, they would know, they'd know that going?
Oh, they'd know that in advance, of course, yeah.
Okay. Also, in question number four, actually, excuse me, I think it was four, yes, he said that this would increase the property value of the raving properties. I assume that this would be increased just by it not being vacant anymore, but I was curious about.
Not just being vacant, but it's obviously in aesthetics as well.
Yeah, I was wondering what those aesthetics would be, like, would you be improving it somehow beyond just having it not be vacant or what would you do?
Well, we'd be taking out all of those broken plate glass windows out front and putting in standard double hung windows.
Okay. Wonder if they're a mural or something.
Right.
Any more questions from the board? Not seeing any? Okay. Have a seat.
All set.
Yeah, all set.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is there anybody in the audience with questions, concerns, or comments about this application? Not seeing anybody? Okay, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Sylvia, your comments.
Okay. My main concern was the parking arrangements, but if the tenants know going into the agreement that they may, after they make their own parking arrangements, I think that's the key concern. It seemed to meet the five criteria otherwise from what I can ascertain.
Thank you. Ms. Boras?
I also agree, and I'm in favor of the application.
Mr. Mancara.
Yeah, I will say I struggle a bit with the parking, but I do agree that, you know, the tenants are going to know it going in. There are some parking. Is that a challenge? Yes. Could it be? Yes. I'm not thoroughly comfortable with it, but overall, I mean, in terms of the density, there are 70-plus units going in right next door. So when I look at the density of the area, we have also other multifamily in the area. Parking is an issue, I think, probably generally in the neighborhood. I also, you know, find the argument that it's challenging to rent it as commercial space to be fairly convincing. There is a lot of vacant commercial space, space that doesn't have any parking is probably not going to be that attractive for the, so for those reasons, I support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Neely.
I'm in favor of the application for the reasons as stated by my colleagues.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher.
I also am in favor of the application for reasons spoken.
Thank you. I am in favor. I just have a question for Mr. Falk. Are there any city regulations require, regarding parking spaces that are required by the city or is that just something we can waive? I assume we can. That's what we're here for.
Parking spaces are required to be nine feet wide by 20 feet long dimensionally, and they're required to have one and a half spaces per unit for multifamily. This is an existing non-conforming site. It will require a site plan amendment. Anything over four units, four units and above does require a planning board approval. So that would be a planning board issue for the parking.
Okay. All right, in that case, then, you know, then I'm in favor. Would somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Sylvia, you're volunteering to make a motion.
First meeting.
Please, yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this.
Okay, so the way we do this is you read the, read the case description.
Okay.
And then you, we go through each of the, I'll tell you what, we're going to have.
I'll learn.
Who, was it Mr. Mancara? Okay, watch what he does.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll get you the next time.
Not that I'm an expert, but I'd like to make a motion that the application of Kuma Nashua LLC owner of 102 to 104 East Hollis Street requesting a variance from land use code section 190-15, Table 15-1, number 15, to convert an existing first-floor commercial space into an apartment resulting in a total of six residential units in the building that is in the GI TOD zone in Ward 7 be approved. We find that a variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property and the benefits offered by the applicant can't be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. We did find that overall that the density is not in excess of what is found in the surrounding neighborhood. There are, it is challenging to rent the space as a commercial use, so some sort of reasonable use of that portion of the property is in order and that these proposed is a reasonable use. It is with the in spirit and intent of the ordinance to allow reasonable use of the property. It will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels, and we had no testimony to that effect. It's not contrary to the public interest and substantial justice would be done in allowing full use of the property.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Ms. Boras, thank you for your second. Any discussion of the motion? All those in favor? Ms.
I'm not voting on this one.
Oh, that's right, yes. Somebody else would need a second. Mr. Neely, thank you. Okay, yes, Mr. Sylvia is voting on this one. So everybody in favor, raise your hand. Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, congratulations. Your use variance has been granted. I believe Mr. Falk said that you need to discuss with the planning board your site plan. And again, any resident has 30 days to file a request for rehearing. Contact the planning department if you have questions and good luck.
Thank you very much. Good night.
Moving on to case number three, and Ms. Boras will be voting on this one. Mark, excuse me, Matt N. and Abigail Christikos owners, 9 Vernon Street, Sheet 68, Lot 113, requesting the following variances. One, from land use code section 190-17B to allow two principal structures on one lot, one permitted, and two, variance from land use code section 190-16, Table 16-3, for a minimum land area 5,925 square feet existing, 10,454 square feet required by converting a detached garage into a two-bedroom apartment for a total of three units on the lot, including an existing duplex. This is in the RC zone, Ward 3. I see somebody here who's present the case. Please give your name and address for the record and walk us through your application.
Good evening, my name is Stephanie Smith, representing Matt and Abigail for the 9 Vernon Street in Nashua. The purpose of this request is to provide additional housing options in our community to make efficient use of existing space while adhering to all relevant regulations and standards to take a two, excuse me, a garage into a two-story, two-bedroom with enough parking spots to benefit each and individual unit, giving each tenant two spots. I've identified each of the questions related to the city of Nashua. We've also identified plans attached on the layout of the property with the property lines identified. We've also identified the layout of the unit as of right now that the garage is utilized as storage for the owners and not any access for the previous tenants.
Mr. Neely.
The, the main house, is that a one-family house or a multifamily now?
Multifamily.
So two families?
Yes.
Okay. And for parking, so it looks like you have enough space for probably six cars?
Yes, and I don't, I, they could ultimately make another seventh.
Oh, wow, okay.
Any other questions on the board? Not seeing any? Okay, may I have a seat? Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is there anybody in the audience with questions, concerns, or comments about the application? Not seeing any? I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. And again, Ms. Boras will be voting on this case. Let's see. Mr. Mancara, your comments.
Overall, I find it to be, you know, a fairly reasonable request. The building exists. Kind of going around the surrounding neighborhood, it does seem to be mostly ones and twos. There are some, you know, multifamily in the area as well. The density doesn't jump out at me. I'm struggling a little bit with the special conditions. What makes this property stand out? So I'd be interested in hearing what some of the thoughts on that might be.
Mr. Neely.
I'm in favor of this application. I think this is a very creative way for us to kind of attack our lack of housing stock. There is more than enough parking for, in this case, it'll be three units total. It is interesting that there are, in that neighborhood, several buildings that have good-sized outbuildings, one of which looks like an old chicken coop or something like that. So there are quite a few extra buildings in the lots around it. Surprisingly, the house directly behind it, I believe on Fairmount, that backyard is completely paved, and so there would still be cars parked between this, this potential apartment and the associated house on Fairmount. And I thought they presented a pretty good case, so I'm in favor of this application.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher.
I'm also in favor of the application. As I went around the neighborhood, I started to look a little bit more at the homes. I noticed, you know, the house across the street had six meters on it, and it looks like it's two, two separate homes on the same lot, but it's connected in the back. And then to the left of this proposed, I saw three meters on the house. And so, and then next door, again, there's several meters. So I think it fits into the, to what the neighborhood is, you know, that mix. So with that, I don't think it's unreasonable. You answered my question, how many units were in the main house? I didn't know if it was two or three, but it's obviously two, so three, so again, I don't think it's, you know, excessive considering, you know, the rest of the neighborhood and what's going on. So with that, I'm going to support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Sylvia, your comments?
My only concern was the parking, and I think the applicant's representative talked about that very well. I was concerned about the impact to neighbors, but it sounds like there's more than enough parking, and I think this is probably the highest and best use for that particular side building, so I'm in favor of this if I was to.
Ms. Boras.
I'm also in favor for all that have been spoken.
Okay, so I'm going to be a little contrary. We've had applications similar to this in the past. There was one off of Amherst Street not too long ago where they wanted to convert a detached garage into an apartment, and we denied that application. One of the things that I struggle with is if we talk about within the spirit and intent of the ordinance, and the ordinance is very clear that, well, this is not, you know, that, well, the ordinance is clear that you're not to have more than one residential structure on a lot, and we've denied other cases where somebody was trying to build a second detached apartment. In fact, there was one, just, I forget the name of the little street, just a couple of months ago that we did, and we denied that one. So, yeah, converting a garage to an apartment seems reasonable, but then you look and say, well, you know, is, what is the special condition of the property? And there isn't any really special condition of the property. It's already a duplex with a garage that's functional, and it's used for storage the way a lot of people do. And I'm having a hard time seeing how it really meets the criteria for a variance. So I would be inclined to vote against this. Any further comments from the board? Would somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Neely.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the variances for Matt, Matt N. and Abigail Christikos owners, 9 Vernon Street, Sheet 68, Lot 113, requesting the following variances. Number one, from land use code section 190-17, subsection B, to allow two principal structures on one lot where one is permitted, and number two, variance from land use code section 190-16, Table 16-3, for a minimum land area 5,925 square feet existing, 10,454 square feet required by converting detached garage into a two-bedroom apartment for a total of 3. of three units on the lot, including an existing duplex. This is located in the RC Zone Ward 3. The variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. The board did have discussion of what is common in that neighborhood. It is found that there was several buildings, one specifically noted right across the street, where it looks like it's a higher density than would normally be permitted in that area. We are in a housing crisis in Nashua, and there was some discussion that this is a creative way to add housing stock into the neighborhood and into the community. And we did have discussion that adequate parking was already in place, and so there would be no additional exterior work that would have to be done to add to any parking here. The board does feel this is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. This will not adversely affect the property values of the surrounding parcels. We did not have any testimony, one way or the other, about an adverse effect. This is not contrary to public interest, and substantial justice would be served. So for those reasons, I make a motion to approve the variances.
Thank you. And Ms. Boras, thank you for your second. Any discussion of the motion? Ready to vote? All those in favor of the motion? That's four, and all those opposed? Me, that's one. So, passes four to one. Congratulations.
I did?
Hmm? Well, I'm sorry, did I miss something?
I voted no.
Oh, you voted no? Okay, so it's three to two. Mr. Mancara, Mr. Lionel voted no. Still passes, three to two. Again, there's a 30-day window of appeal, but otherwise, good luck. Case number four. The Huntington at Nashua, care of the Hunt Community, attentional needs of Valcourt owner, Classic Signs Inc. applicant, 55 Kent Street, Sheet B, Lot 26, requesting the following variances from Land Use Code Section 190-101, Table 101-7. One, to encroach 15 feet into the 25-foot required setback to an intersection, and two, to exceed maximum area per ground sign, 10 square feet permitted, 17 square foot proposed. This is the R18 Zone Ward 8. Good evening. Please give your name and address for the record, and walk us through the application.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman of the Board. My name is Paul Tripp from Classic Signs in Amherst New Hampshire, representing the Huntington for a new sign proposal. You have seen the drawings there. I do have to apologize a little bit. I kind of came into this, the back door, because the original sign company went bankrupt, so we have taken over this project in order to represent the Huntington. Nevertheless, I think I can represent this well and give you some good information about what they're looking to do. So generally, the Huntington needs better identification and fresher identification because the current sign there now is old, and so they're looking to replace that sign and build it with something new. So the application is, it's a very reasonable ask. The size allowed in that residential zone is 10 square feet, and we're proposing 17 and a half square feet. So to help you put that into perspective, the sign that is currently there is about the size of that TV monitor, and we're looking to increase it to about the size of that TV monitor. So it's not a big ask. The other thing is that we're looking to place it closer to the street than what is allowed. And so there's a couple of issues there. I would like to speak, of course, mostly to the hardship case here for the distance of the sign from the street. So as the city of Nashua has indicated, they have put a 25-foot setback to an intersection and for a safety reason. So in this particular area, when you take a look at the map, the property line is actually 32 feet from the intersection. So I'm actually proposing and hoping that maybe you would even receive the idea that we would just place the sign on the property line, which would be 32 feet back from the intersection. 25 feet is the required distance. That would put us, if we went 25 feet back, that would still put the sign on the city property. We're happy to do that, but I don't think that you would be happy for us to do that. So we're proposing that we place the sign at the 32-foot mark. So we're kind of at your mercy regarding that idea. I don't know where this board is historically as far as setbacks are concerned for the sign, but even placing the sign at the 32-foot mark puts it onto the property of the business and clearly exceeds what the setback is requirement for the city. So for the hardship case, I'd like to just speak to you about that. The sign that is currently there, again, is about six square feet. We're going to 17 and a half square feet. So again, it's not huge. We're not asking, it's not a big ask for a giant sign here. The problem that we have here regarding the property and why this property is unique to all the other properties in the area are for two reasons. One is the driveway is exactly right on the corner of the property line to the east. So there's a large growth of trees on the neighbor's property here that significantly blocks the view of the sign coming when you're coming from the east and heading west. So, and because you're on that side of the road, the cone of vision is very narrow, so you come up onto the driveway very, very quickly. So we have that problem to the east. Over to the west, we have wetlands that are actually part of the property, and it also drops down about 30 feet. So we have some unique situations here with their driveway, and it makes it difficult to find a good spot, excuse me, to put the sign. If we were to actually put the sign 25 feet back from the property line as required, the sign would then be 62 feet away from the intersection. I think that's a little unreasonable to ask this community. It's a retirement community. They're community partners. They provide a great service for this community with the elderly housing here, and they need identification. So, you know, there's a couple of very compelling reasons why it's important for them to have proper and adequate signage so that residents, visitors to those elderly people, and most importantly, service vehicles and/or emergency vehicles can, they're going to know where to turn. I hope that you're familiar with this property. I hope that you drove down the road. I hope that you drove right by the property, turned around, and skied metal because it's like, where is this place? I don't even know. Right? You probably, you're all shaking your heads. I appreciate that.
I live down the street.
What's that?
I live down the street.
You live down the street? All right. So another very compelling argument that I would have for this is even though we are looking to increase the sign from what is allowed, I believe that it will still be the smaller sign on the street in that zone. All the way from the highway on Spitbrook Road to the south to the Massachusetts border, that is all residential zone. Every single sign on that street, once you get just past the Park Industrial Zone where Oracle is and the hotel and all that there, on both sides of the street, once you get past there, is all residential zone. Every single sign on there is much larger than we're proposing here. In fact, there's one sign that's over 100 square feet. Took a picture of it. You're probably familiar where Lilac Blossom is. That sign is 112 square feet. I have to assume that this board approves a variance for that sign because they would only have been allowed 10 square feet. So again, every single sign that's there in what we're proposing here. So I believe it's reasonable. I believe it's helpful. I believe it's in line with the intent of the ordinance, and I believe that it will provide a great public service in order to allow them to have the sign that is proposed. And again, as I kind of came into the back door a little bit on this ordinance here, the site plan that you may have, quite honestly, I don't even know what you're looking at because my permit person left their job about two weeks ago. So again, I'm kind of scrambling here. I found what I believe you're looking at for a site plan, but I have created a new one here for your perusal, if you'd like to look at it.
Yes, we would.
But again, putting the sign right at the property line would put it at 32 feet back from the ride, from the road, right-of-way intersection.
I was discussing with Mr. Falk about what the city considers to be the intersection in terms of determining what the setback from, quote, "the intersection" should be.
Right.
And the intersection is not on your property. It's on city property. So it isn't clear to me, I mean, if, whether you even need a variance on the setback. Mr. Falk, why don't you?
Okay. Everybody has this drawing. That thick red line, that's the property line. The street off to the right is Kent Lane. The street down here is Spitbrook Road. The ordinance requires signs to be 25 feet back from an intersection of two rightaways. This large area down in the bottom central part of the map, that's all part of the city right-of-way. That's not their property. So we are effectively looking at the intersection as where Kent Lane intersects that property line. Otherwise, the sign would be in the city property. And we don't, our board does not, we don't have the authority to consider signage in the right-of-way. We don't own it. It's DPW or the Board of Public Works. So if we look at the effective intersection, is that red line where it intersects with Kent Lane, they're supposed to be 25 feet back from that intersection. They're showing it as 10 feet. You see the little 10-foot designation? That's where the variance is to encroach 15 feet into that 25-foot section. I think if Mr. Tripp wanted to have the sign, I think he wants it closer to the intersection of Spitbrook Road and Kent Lane. But if it's any closer than the 10 feet, if it's more of an encroachment than 15 feet, then I believe they'd have to come back before the board because it would be a greater request. It would be to encroach 25 feet into the 25-foot setback or 20 feet. On the bottom or the south side of that red line, that's all right-of-way, and they can't do that anyway. So if he wants it a little closer, if the board agrees, he would have to come back before this board. The size isn't an issue. It's, the code requires 10. They're requesting 17, which is, you know, in our estimation, it's pretty small. It's not even, it's barely half the size of a sheet of plywood. With the amount of units back there and for the, you know, the residents who live back there, that's an extremely reasonable request to have better visibility for those folks who live back there, especially with the amount of ambulances and doctors and elderly folks who live back there. That's not really an issue with us, but it's just the intersection. Only because they have a large space before they get to their property, they can't really count.
So I'm not quite sure you're agreeing with me or not.
Well, I think you guys want the sign closer to Spitbrook Road.
Of course.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that you could see it, but it would still be on their property, and it would still be 32 feet.
Yeah, if you want it on their property but right at the property line, which is still 32 feet away, I believe it would have to be re-advertised to encroach 25 feet into the 25-foot setback from the intersection. They'd have to come back. Unless you're okay with it going there, and that would be up to an appeal by an abutter because it's greater, it's a greater request than what has been advertised.
So, excuse me. I have a question. So, sir, so do you, this is real simple for me. Do you want the sign right on the property line, or are you okay with putting the sign 10 feet back from your property line, from the property line? Or do you want the sign edge right on the property line?
Well, I agree, the request, the request was only made because of the way the wordage was under denial for the sign permit. Yes, of course, I would like it to be right on the property line. Would we agree with 10, another 10 feet back? Now that puts the sign 42 feet away from the intersection. You know, we're kind of like, is it even worth putting the sign, you know?
So I guess what we're trying to figure out is whether or not, at this point, we're moving forward, or there's something else that we can do, right, as a board?
Yeah, they would prefer the sign to be basically right where that thick red line is.
That's what I get, but that's not how this is advertised, so we can't, we can't do that.
Correct. That's what our, that's what our application is in the advertisement. So generally, if an applicant wants something that's greater than or more than what has been advertised, generally the board in the past has not, or has required people to re-advertise the case because it's a greater request. A abutter's may not come out if it's 10 feet away, but a abutter's may come out if it's one foot away. It may be a stronger issue, so that's generally why the board has asked people to re-advertise or asked to re-advertise it for them.
I guess what I would do is talk to my client and ask if she's willing to wait another month to re-advertise, to come back before. It sounds like you're sympathetic to what we're requesting, but you're stuck with this idea that, you know, the law is the law, so you kind of have to obey as far as the ruling is concerned, unless there is a little loophole that we could kind of, you know, fine, help me out here is what I'm saying.
There's no loophole, unfortunately. Our code doesn't work that way legally. It's just, it's just that Spitbrook Road is a very unique street. There is a very wide right-of-way in portions of Spitbrook Road. I know the World Academy, the fire station, a little bit further out west. It even goes to 60 or 80 feet from the pavement, and we've had requests right at the property line, but they're still 50 feet away from the World School. So it's just, most right-of-ways don't have this much extra land area on the side like this. This is very, very unique in the city. So it does make sense, from an applicant's point of view or the landowner's point of view, to have the sign more towards that red thick line at the property line. The size, I think the board can vote on the size. That's going to be the same whether they're 10 feet back or right at the property line. If that's still, you know, what's proposed. So I think the board can vote on the size and...
So what you're saying is if we keep it at the 10-foot encroachment, then you could vote on that?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. They could vote on the size.
But if we wanted to go a little bit closer, we could vote on the size? It sounds like you're sympathetic to the idea of it, but we would have to repost.
So if we, if we granted both of the requested variances, could they come back and then say, well, now we would like to put it on the, on the property line, and we could, and there would basically be a new application?
There'd be a new application.
Yeah, and that would be, and we could, we could handle that if it was, that request was made.
So, Mr. Falk is here. Cost difference between re-advertising and a new application? So would one benefit the applicant more than the other?
It'd not be the same.
The same? Okay. Thanks.
But I wouldn't want the applicant to walk away feeling that, hey, we'll just come back next month and ask for the zero-foot setback. I mean, I know the board kind of puts you on the spot by saying, by saying that you'd agree with that setback of zero feet, because that's kind of telling them that you're kind of approving it before they're really advertising for it.
Well, we haven't said anything. We haven't even heard if there's anybody here who is in favor or opposition.
But that's just, you know, I just don't want them to feel like, you know, they can just walk away and they know they can get it at zero feet.
So I won't use the word loophole, but is there a procedure in such that you could approve the setback that I'm requesting as long as there are no abutters who oppose it within 30 days or something like that? Is there any kind of procedure that we could follow that way?
I wish there were for you guys, but there really is not. It would have to be, you know, our ordinance is, you know, there's sizes, setbacks, heights, there's a lot of dimensional criteria for all signs in the city, and anything... And anything above and beyond what our code has for dimensional criteria, anything, anything that is asked for above that would require a variance, subject to the board's approval. We don't have the authority to waive any of those administratively. That way, we would be doing it for everybody. So we don't have the authority to do that. So that's why there, there's two variances that you've applied for. The size is one, and then the setback to an intersection is the other. So it looks like the size is, I'm thinking, amenable, but it's up to the board. The setback, if you want it any more than fifteen feet into that twenty-five foot section, I believe would have to be re-advertised.
So what would the procedure, okay, we can, we can vote on the size variance. That's not a problem. What is the procedure for the other one? Do we simply not consider it?
You could not consider it. We can have them come back next month.
Could we?
Or we could approve the whole thing, or we could deny the whole thing. We don't know.
No, if we deny it, can...
Well, I mean, we haven't had any conversation about it whatsoever, except for this kind of back and forth about whether, what are we doing?
Mr. McCarry is saying that we haven't discussed the merits of the case.
We haven't discussed the merits at all.
I understand that. I'm just trying, I'm trying to understand what the procedure would be.
Well, I think we have the opportunity to act on the application that's before us, or the applicant could choose to withdraw and, you know, continue it to another, well, it wouldn't even be a continuation. They could choose to withdraw this application and submit a new one. Or potentially, we could act. They could not like the way we acted and they could file for rehearing. I think those are the options.
So if I could make a suggestion following Mr. McCarry, I think maybe we give the applicant a few minutes to confer and then with that, we can move forward one way or the other.
I would appreciate that.
Yeah, okay.
Another thing is they could just withdraw the, the first one and the board could deliberate on the second one. That's another option.
I don't know what kind of difference that's going to make.
Yeah, I don't know about that either.
Yeah, I would keep it as...
Then that way, they have to meet the ordinance anyway.
Yeah.
Right.
Wait until I spin down to a drag and expect it out of the first case. Out the rest.
Can we take a two-minute break?
Yeah, we'll, we'll take a five-minute break. Come back at eight oh eight.
Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Come and give us your name and address and make your comment.
Good evening, my name is Lisa Valcourt and I am the Executive Director for the Huntington. And thank you very much, Mr. Tripp, for his presentation. So in addition to the areas of, that he noted as, you know, important areas for us to get this sign, the other sign has, we're going on 20 years as of November, that we will be there. And I would say for the last four and a half years, it has become increasingly harder for those visiting the Huntington to know where we are, first-time visitors, potential new clients, and especially potential new employees. And we have had many potential employees drive by us and go to another facility or community, maybe downtown to our sister community, Hunt Community, thinking that's where they were going, and have said, "We can't find you." And even with Google Maps, they'll pull it up and maybe find us after they've already landed at another location. It is a very, very important thing to us that we fill all of our positions and, you know, provide a really high standard, high quality of living for the residents who live there. The other area is safety, and I know that Mr. Tripp spoke about that, but in times where we may call an ambulance or an emergency to, you know, come in, see what is happening, we have had vehicles that have gone by but have turned around to come back. It's very easy to go right past World Academy and miss that driveway and think that it is coming up.
Okay, I did ask for your address, is it the address 55 Kent Street?
My personal address?
Well, the address where you can be contacted.
Fifty-five Kent Lane, yes. I apologize for that.
Okay. Any questions from the board for Ms. Valcourt? Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is there anybody in the audience with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Please come up and give your name and address for the record and make your comment.
Hi, Denise Musioli, Six Min Hurst. I definitely think they need a sign. I don't have a problem with a sign, but I brought a photograph, and I'm not privy to the plans that you see. I'm not, I'm not sure, is this going to be a ground sign? Is it going to be on pillars? Is it going to be lighted? I don't know these things. But I do know, depending on where they're going to place the sign, in that area, there is already four signs, is that wooded spot right after the facility. I don't know if that's where they're intending to put it, but if the sign blocks these other signs, like you have a left-hand turn for East Dunstable, there's a curve coming up, comes up really quick as soon as you pass their, their facility. There's East Dunstable, there's a deer crossing sign, and then there's a T-intersection sign, so I'm wondering, and the bus stop sign. So I'm wondering if this sign is going to be blocking any of that. Like I said, I don't have the plan, so I can't say much more about that, but I would be concerned about having so many signs clustered in that one area. And he mentioned wetlands, so I don't know if they're going to be taking any vegetation away, because I believe there is a brook there, maybe just seasonally, that runs underneath it, maybe old maid's brook, and then runs onto, to Robey Park. So that's another thing we have to try to figure out, if, if they're going to be disturbing vegetation, you know, we're going to be talking about erosion and things like that, so. But I definitely, you know, I'm in agreement with them needing a sign. World Academy has a fairly large sign, and it is something that you can drive by and miss, because the sign that I see is just really small right now, other than what's on the gate. So those would just be the questions that I have, and I actually live in that area, so maybe, maybe some of these signs can be rearranged. Maybe the deer crossing sign could be, I actually had asked for that sign, maybe that could be further back from the, closer to the fire department, because O.K.L. is where I've seen the deer hit, and that's why the city put up that sign. So maybe these can be rearranged a little bit, but like I said, I don't know if it's a ground sign or not, so those would be the questions that I would ask the applicant. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else with questions, concerns, or comments? Mr. Tripp, you may come up and respond to the comments that you just heard.
So I'll address this to you, so I appreciate your concern about those things. So all the signs that you're referring to are signs that are on the street, they're designed to be viewed from the road, not from any other place. So the, the angle at which you're viewing them is from the street looking this way?
Make sure you're talking to the microphone.
Okay, sorry. How about this? Is that better?
Yes.
All right. So we are putting, we're now putting the sign 42 feet back from the intersection. So I have lots of pictures here that I can show you as to where the sign is going to go. I do have a picture from Google Maps here that shows a vehicle pulling out and where it stopped waiting for traffic to go by, and the sign, and the column is way behind the sign here. So again, any sign that is in, there's no, it's impossible for it to be in the way, because all of the traffic signs, the deer crossing signs, they're designed to be viewed from the streets, not from the property. So, and then as far as the wetlands are concerned, there, it's, it's tight because there's a sidewalk that comes down on that side there, but we do have a level spot before we go down into the wetlands. And for those reasons, as I mentioned, part of the hardship is that we don't want to disturb the wetlands, we don't want to cut anything down, we don't want to do anything there that would disturb those wetlands. So we are keeping it up on the level ground before, and I'm happy to show her these photographs that I have that would help clarify that.
Yeah, so, okay, so why don't you show her the photographs, and then, then she can come back and, if she wishes to, and make, make a final comment. Okay, so I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Neely, your comments?
I am, I am in favor of this application. This was my first time visiting this community, it's a, it's a much bigger community than I expected. You know, I took a look at the current sign, compared it to some of the signage in the very immediate area, and it definitely is smaller than, than everybody else's signs. The applicant gave some great reasons for the, the need for these variances, and the one that really resonates for me is the safety of the first responders to the residents. We know this is, it skews older for the folks down there, so I do think that's a critical piece for us to look at. As we had discussed, there is definitely a, quite a setback there from the, where Spitbrook is to really where, where their property line starts, and led to some spirited discussion about whether to, to go forward with this, but I do think that's extenuating circumstances because it is setback so far. They are replacing the current signage there, so it's not like we're adding into the signage. I think it'll be a very attractive-looking sign along with the, the current columns and the gates. And, and so for those reasons, I'm in favor of this application.
Thank you, and I forgot to mention, Mr. Sylvia will be voting on, on this case. Mr. McCarroll, your comments?
I, I support the application, really for all the reasons Mr. Neely stated.
Ms. Boras?
I also support the application for the same reason.
Mr. Sylvia?
I support the application, I think the, what was mentioned in regard to emergency services was definitely important. And I feel there's a special condition in regard to the fact that it's so far away from the residential part of the property, even though it's on a residential, its own residential, but the residences are set back on the driveway there. The, the sign would be closer to World Academy and the fire station and the storage area. It seems like it almost would fit in more than that neighborhood versus the residence. I think this is appropriate, and I will support this.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
I also support the application for all the reasons spoken to.
And I also support the application. Somebody would like to make a motion?
I try again?
Mr. Sylvia? Okay.
Okay. I move that we accept the application, the Huntington at Nashua, care of the Hunt Community, attention Lisa Valcourt, Classic Signs Incorporated, 55 Kent Street, Sheet B, Lot 27, requesting the following variances from Land Use Code, Section 190-101, Table 101-7, 1, to encroach 15 feet into the 25-foot required setback to an intersection, and 2, to exceed the maximum area for ground sign, 10 square feet permitted, 17 square feet proposed, R, 18 zone, word 8. For all the men, all the reasons mentioned here, I, I believe that this sign is appropriate at the size that was requested, given the distance from the road and the need for the sign, and I'm not sure what else to say.
Well, we read through each of these, each one.
Okay, so each one of the five?
Read through each of the five and, and make any additional comments on, on the particular item that you heard from the discussion here.
Okay. So the variance is needed in regard to the special conditions of the property, given the fact that currently people cannot find the property from the road easily. It's with the spirit and intent of the ordinance, given the fact that they're allowed to have a sign in that area, to my understanding. It will not adversely affect the property values and surrounding parcels, as there are other signs of that size or larger nearby. It's not contrary to the public interest, given what we heard in regard to people finding the property in especially emergency vehicles. And the special condition is both the setback.
We don't, there are no special conditions, that's something that we.
Substantial justice?
Yeah, substantial justice, that, that's the one that you need to read, yes.
Substantial justice will be served to allow at this sign.
Okay, so you make a motion to approve this variance. Second, Mr. McCarroll, thank you.
Mr. Chair, just for clarification, it sounded like when he was going through, he said it was Sheet B, Lot 27, it's actually Sheet B, Lot 26, just a clarification.
Yes.
Oops, I'm sorry.
Totally natural.
I did, I heard that too. Okay, Mr. McCarroll, are you agreeing to?
Yes.
Accept that? Okay, so Sheet B, Lot 26. Any discussion, further discussion of the motion? Ready to vote? Okay, all those in favor, again, Mr. Sylvia is voting on this one. That's five to nothing, unanimous, congratulations. This set of variances has been approved. If you wish to come out, act with a different one, then see the plan in the apartment and they'll help you out. Moving on to case number five, and this one Ms. Boras will be voting.
Mr. Sylvia, totally natural, I've been caught in that multiple times.
Riviere College, 435 South Main Street, Sheet 112, Lot 1, requesting the following variances, 1, from Land Use Code, Section 190-194, G, to encroach 20 feet into the 25-foot required front yard side, excuse me, front yard setback on Old Field Road to allow for parking spaces, and 2, variance from Land Use Code, Section 190-16, Table 16-3, for minimum open space, 50% required, 49% existing, 38% proposed. This is the R zone, word 7. Zone 7, yes, word 7. Good evening, please give your name and address for the record and walk us through your application.
Sister Paula Marie Buoli, President of Riviere University, 420 South Main Street. I'm joined by Mr. Stephen Parata, Vice President for Finance and Administration. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Riviere is here to ask for two variances related to the expansion of parking. This expansion is consistent with our philosophy of ensuring ample parking on our campus for student safety, for the welfare of our neighbors. I'm speaking tonight specifically to stipulate to the cooperation that the university wishes to demonstrate with our neighbors, that's Ian Peter Hood. We've had very cordial and fairly substantial conversations, and we wish to assure them that the fencing and screening is appropriately located to not disturb shrubbery, but to screen them from headlights, and that we also stipulate to additional fencing in their backyard, which would be inclusive of the rock outcropping and the bird feeder. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'd like to introduce Mr. Tim Manis of our architectural firm, Durkin Edson. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, please give your name and address for the record.
Good evening, my name's Tim Manis. Address of our firm is Durkin Edson LLC, 33 South Broad Street, Lititz, Pennsylvania, 17543.
Thank you, proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Board, for agreeing to hear this application this evening. I'm going to try to flip through a presentation to summarize a couple of things for you. One is the work that was actually just completed about a month and a half ago at Riviere Village Phase 1, because that lays the foundation for what we're asking for this evening, for the board. And if I can get this to cooperate, I will do that. There we go. So a little bit of a project introduction, the plan, the variance requests that we are requesting or asking for, and the proposed site concept. You have the plan already, I just wanted to show you some 3D imagery. We are very much in favor of trying to show you what it's going to look like before we build it, so you can see. Just as Phase 1 was, residents, Phase 2 residence halls, Buildings 3 and 4, are apartment-style, upper-class housing, primarily single-bedroom, a couple of double-bedrooms, elevator. If you've driven by there, you see the buildings. There's 37 beds in each building, and they're a little bit smaller in scale than what you might think of as a typical collegiate dorm building, not like Trinity Hall or Guild Hall. They're a little on a smaller scale, and that was on purpose. And so the idea for this next phase is those two, we're not really asking anything in regard to those two buildings, just telling you to know what those are. The site goals are, as Sister mentioned, increased green space around the, the buildings certainly themselves, a central green, as a matter of fact. Additional parking, we have to provide a certain amount of parking, and we're trying to kind of clean that area up a bit, it's a service area right now, and provide additional campus parking. And when we approach projects like this at Riviere, we try to think of the campus as a whole, moving parking to the edges and green space to the middle, trying to provide walkability and accessibility throughout the campus. And of course, the quality and approach that Riviere brings to these projects over the last decade, I think is apparent in everything you can see out at the campus. And so the drawing that was submitted with the variance request illustrates two things. One, the parking and the 25-foot front yard setback along Old Field Road. Similar variance, just to mention this, was granted for Phase 1, where we had also the 25-foot setback along Old Field Road. And, and those lots actually have front yard setbacks all around because of the situations of the lots. All those roads have front yard setbacks, or all the edges do. And then additionally, the coverage set, the coverage amount on, excuse me, Map 112, Lot 1, as was mentioned, is, it's slightly below the, the amount that's required now, the 50% is at 49. We're going to take it down further, as you see on the drawing. And once again, thinking holistically, it's just on that particular lot that it's that way. As far as the campus as a whole goes, they are far under the impervious or the coverage amount, if you think of the campus as a whole, and I have those numbers that I can mention if anyone's interested. This 3D image aerial view is of the Riviere Village Phase 1, again, that was just completed. You see, looking from right to left, Old Field Road, you see the screening that was built as part of that parking, the linear parking lot, the green space, and the first two buildings that, that were done. Clement Street's on your left, with South Main kind of running in the upper middle there in the science center. This is a image taken from a slightly different angle of what we are proposing, and I put the parking in the foreground because that's the lot where the variances are being requested. The, again, the, the Buildings 3 and 4, we're not asking for anything over there. What we're asking for is the parking setback and the coverage on this particular piece of their campus, which happens to be its own lot. So this illustrates what we have in mind there. And I also have a before photo of this in just a minute for your information. Again, back over to Buildings 3 and 4, showing you the central green, the area that we're looking to build those, those two additional buildings on. And of course, this parking goes with that development. You'll see in this photograph, an aerial, right in the middle of the photograph is the, is the Memorial Hall parking lot now. To the right of that, you will see a scattering of buildings, sheds, storage units, dumpsters, and some of the maintenance buildings. Riviere has recently moved their maintenance, or they're in the process of moving their maintenance and campus oversight to a different site. So this, we have the ability of taking all of this and moving it and getting rid of this particular setup here. So the lawn maintenance tractors and everything else will be going away from this site, and that opens it up for the parking development then, to get rid of all that kind of thing, and to transform it, rather, into this next slide, which should come up, there it is. So on the right of that photograph, or that picture, you see the parking that would be proposed in place of the maintenance shed area that's there currently. And then a few more, just for your information, this is from the ground level, kind of over at Mul Doom Gymnasium, looking across South Main Street, giving you the impression of the buildings. This is from the corner, actually, if you're standing at the corner with Clement going off to your left and you're looking down Old Field, you see the situation there now. And I should mention that there's actually parking in that front yard setback now with the maintenance buildings, they're, they park there currently, so we're, we're trying to, again, clean that up a bit and get rid of all that look-through there. This is what we are proposing with the screened parking, parking in the background there in the middle, and the entrance to the parking in that location. A new Riviere Village 1 building to the left here, you see, this kind of backs up with Memorial Hall on the right, showing you the distant view of Clement and Old Field, and it's a little bit in the distance, but you see the screening fence that was already put into the Phase 1, and that would be the same thing on this side with landscape also. And then actually, right in front of the Hoods Residence, looking at their very nice arborvitae hedge they have there, and there's no change occurring to that, and this would be the, the, hopefully future after-view of that. It really doesn't change anything from that view, just we have the screened parking rather than the open parking that you see kind of in that view. And that's what I have for the, the graphics of it. So just to summarize, Riviere obviously is expanding, they're, they're a growing concern, they're very successful, and that's something that is a credit to Sister Paula and her team. We're trying to keep things going there with quality building in terms of what we're doing with the housing and the parking. A little schedule note, we, we have not prepared plans yet for the planning board, that will be coming. We certainly wanted to get your input and approval first before we finish designing this parking lot, so that we get it right. But as was stated earlier about other projects, this has to all go through planning board, through DES, through engineering, et cetera, before it's all finalized. But we hope to proceed with the plan as presented this evening, if the board grants.
That it? Any questions from the board? Not seeing any? Okay, have a seat.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Please come up and give your name and address for the record. Feel free to move that microphone down.
Thank you. So my name's Elizabeth Hood, and I reside with my husband Peter at 12 Old Field Road. As you can well imagine, when Phase 1 was first proposed, we were extra nervous, knowing that our entire neighborhood was going to be about to change in character. But the one thing that I can absolutely attest to is that every single shrub planting, everything that Riviere proposed in the original site plan absolutely came to fruition and actually came up better than we thought. So when Sister Paula first began talking with us about Phase 2, we had just two fairly minor concerns, both of which they've addressed in the plan today. One is to give us enough room to keep the arborvitae's trimmed, so that they're going to make sure that the fence is placed in such a way that we can actually get to our shrubs. And then in the very back of our house, because they also own the land behind us, it was about 100 feet from us to the highway, are going to clean up some of the debris that's just been hanging out on the ground down there, but offer us the opportunity, either a vinyl fence for some protection, or perhaps a chain-link fence, so we could continue to enjoy the view of the woods. And so we're just incredibly pleased about them being willing to support that as well and give us some extra space. There's some sort of rock formations back there that we've always just sort of used as our space, and learned recently that that actually belongs to the school, but we'll place the fence in such a way that we can continue to enjoy that space. So we have no issues with what they're proposing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? No, okay. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is there anybody in the audience with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Not seeing any? In that case, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Sylvia, your comments?
Okay. My only concern initially was the compactor near the property, but it looks like from Section 190-194, that's not part of what we're talking about tonight, so I guess we, we can't really discuss that, and it sounds like the butter is happy with the situation. It sounds like they put in, Riviere's put a lot of work, and they're good neighbors, so I have no objection to this.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
I'm also in support of the application. Again, I think this is a unique development that's been going on here. I think we can, or I can say that Riviere has done an excellent job, I think, really looking at their neighborhood and, and, you know, going ahead and, and making sure that they're successful, and making sure that, that they are fitting into the neighborhood that they're in. And I, the only concern I would have was that, that butter, which I think when we first, when I was here, when we first saw this application, I think there was a lot of concern, but I'm glad to hear that, that that's all been abated. So with that, I'm going to support the application wholeheartedly.
Thank you. Mr. Neely?
I'm also in favor of the application. I'm really impressed with what Riviere's done over the last couple of years with these developments. I, I think it speaks a lot to their character, the, the fact that we've had the direct butter's who were a little trepidatious the, the first time around and have come out very heavily in support of this, I think this says quite a bit. Quite frankly, I think this is going to clean up that area. When there's no leaves, you can definitely see that that's kind of a, a storage area from, from Danny Webster Highway. So quite frankly, I'm, I'm wholeheartedly in support of this application.
Thank you. Mr. McCarroll?
I'm also in support of the application, and I think like my colleagues, I appreciate the willingness of, you know, Riviere to, to work with their neighbors. And overall, I, I think the setbacks for the parking and the overall lot coverage are, you know, consistent with what has already been developed on the campus, it's really consistent with that overall campus feel, so I, I support the application.
Thank you. Ms. Boras?
I'm also in support, for all the reasons already stated, beautiful, beautiful development.
And I'm also in support, I have, have nothing more to add. Somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Neely, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the variances for Riviere College, the owner at 435 South Main Street, which is located at Sheet 112, Lot 1. They're requesting the following variances, number 1, from Land Use Code, Section 190-94 Subsection G, to encroach 20 feet into the 25-foot required front yard setback on Old Field Road to allow for parking spaces, and number 2, a variance from Land Code, excuse me, Land Use Code, Section 190-16, Table 16-3, for a minimum 16-3, for a minimum open space, 50 percent required, 49 percent existing, 38 percent proposed. This is located in the RA Zone in Ward 7. The variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than the variance. The board has had discussion, and have found that this is consistent with the other areas of the campus expansion. This variance application was similar to a previously approved variance application for Phase 1, and that Riviere is committed to keep students and others from street parking, which is a positive. We do find this is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. This will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. We did not have any testimony that it would adversely affect the value, but we did have favorable testimony from the direct abutter. This is not contrary to public interest, and substantial justice would be served. So for those reasons, I make a motion to approve the variances.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Sylvia, we'll take you. You as the second.
Wait, I'm not doing it, I'm sorry.
He's not, it's not, okay, Ms. Boras.
Sorry.
That's true. Yes, he's not voting, and he can't second it. Quite right, yes. And again, Ms. Boras is voting on this one. Any discussion of the motion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. Congratulations. Your application has been approved. Again, beware of the 30-day window of appeal. And that's the last case. We have minutes from the March 12 meeting. I'm going to ask Ms. Boras to vote on this one, because she was there, and Mr. Sylvia was not. Does anybody have, had a chance to read it, and have any comments or corrections?
No comments.
Not seeing anybody? I will make a motion to approve the minutes of March 12. Do I have a second? Mr. Neely, thank you. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Okay, minutes are approved. We have an agenda for April 9. Does anybody see any regional impact from these?
No.
Everybody is saying they see no regional impact. Okay. So that's it. And I will make a motion to adjourn at 8:42. So we are adjourned. Thank you.